Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the June Planning Commission Meeting. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. So if I could have the staff read the opening statement.
All right. The Augusta, Georgia Planning Commission is a recommending body. The final decision on all matters coming before it will be made by the Augusta Commission on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 at 2:00 PM in the Augusta Commission Chambers at a municipal building. The Planning Commission makes the final decision on all variances, including subdivision regulations. A handout describing the zoning procedures from which these cases are decided is available upon request. These procedures also require that any applicant for a rezoning action or any opponent to an application for a rezoning action who has made contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official within two years of a rezoning application to file a disclosure report with the governing authority. The disclosure report must be filed within 10 calendar days of filing of the application, at least 10 calendar days prior to today's hearing. A minimum of 10 minutes shall be afforded for a presentation of data, evidence, opinions on each side of a rezoning petition or special exception. If more than 10 minutes are afforded to one side, then an equal amount of time shall be afforded to the other side. The commission encourages participation of this hearing, and there is no restriction on who may address the commission within the allotted time. But the commission asks that public comments be brief on subject, non-repetitive, and directed to the commission and not to any individual or group.
Thank you, Kevin. We will take the agenda from top to bottom. So if we could start with item number one.
The first item on the agenda is Final Plaid S-1002 Haying Station, Section 16. This is a petition by Cranston LLC on behalf of Coyle Development, INC. and Stephen Beasley Builders, INC. requesting a final plaid approval of Haying Station, Section 16, containing 53 lots. This is located in 1004 Goodell Drive, and it's been approved by all reviewing departments May 2nd, 2025.
Chair, we entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
It's moving properly second. To approve this final plaid. If we can get an all-in-favor vote.
All in favor? Okay. All right, so all in favor, and we can move on to the next item.
I think you gotta take the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm new at this. All right, do we just do a hand?
Yeah, just, yeah, all in favor.
Okay, all in favor for the petition final plaid approval? Okay. Any opposed? All right. This is approved.
All right. Next item, SE225-06, a petition by Shravon Kumar Rao on behalf of Ontrack New LLC requesting special exception per Section 21-2C of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to establish a liquor store affecting property containing approximately 2.03 acres, located at 4505 Windsor Spring Road, Zone B1. Staff will present. So if I'm not mistaken, I believe there has been a request for a postponement of this particular petition. If the staff can just give us some details on the nature of the request to postpone prior to an action from this body.
Yeah, essentially, this item was postponed last month's meeting pending a response from the Board of Education. And there has been several attempts made to get a response on the potential activities for the Willis Foreman Elementary School. And we have been unable to get some clear direction on how the future use of that school. And so with that, there were another particular situation with the classification of the road with Willis Foreman being arterial and a condition calling for these uses to be at an intersection of two arterial streets. The applicant's petition that the item be postponed until we can receive a formal response from the Board of Education. And we received that email response, I believe about two hours ago from the applicant. They're wishes to postpone.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there a motion to postpone this petition?
Chair.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Is there anyone here in opposition or support of this before?
Okay, all right. So the commission would like to know, is there anybody who is opposed to this petition? Did you get a good count?
I believe it was three. How many, how many? Oh, more? One, two. Think I got eight. 10? Keep your hands up. Okay. 11, yeah. Yeah.
All right, is there anybody who was in support of this petition? Two? Yeah, I believe so. You're good, Commissioner O'Neill? Okay, all right. Any other questions from commissioners? Is there a motion of any kind?
I would like to hear the people, see what their concerns are before we...
Okay, is there a spokesperson who wants to speak from the opposition? Good afternoon, sir. If you could state your name and your address, and you have 10 minutes. And if you could just address all your comments directly to this commission.
My name is Lana Wimbley. I live at 2777 Willis Foreman Road. Without having a petitioner here, I think it's going, I'll just be talking to air unless I know exactly what their position is. But based off the request, we stand in opposition of a special exception for a liquor store at 4505 Windsor Spring Road. The presence of such an establishment posed significant risk to the public, as evidenced by DUI statistics in Georgia and in Richmond County. Now, I can inundate you with a bunch of numbers. I have them here if you want that. But let's not do that today. We'll do that if they come back. But less than a month ago, well, actually, less than two weeks ago, you had a young man killed on Dean Bridge Road. His last name was Wimbley. No relation, drunk driver. You had a young lady in the other body where that was a hit and run. You had about a week earlier than that, another hit and run drunk driver, killed a person. The point of it is, is our community need to be safe. We don't, we're not here to regulate alcohol. We're not here to say who could drink and who cannot drink. We're here to say, we want to make sure that we have as much buffer between us and alcohol as we can get for the purpose of keeping us safe. So I'd be more than willing, and I'm pretty sure everyone else would be willing to come back and hear the petition statement so that we know exactly what we're going up against. And I'll add this to it. I saw that service station going up. And when it was going up, I saw that additional part being built, and I was trying to figure out, what is that gonna be? And I could never figure it out. I thought, okay, maybe it's gonna be a little fast food or something. It wasn't. The state of Georgia says a service station, gas station, can sell alcohol, which is beer and wine. But it says only a package store can sell liquor. Now, I think y'all are pretty smart because what I see happen now is they built that building with the sole intent of putting a liquor store there from the very beginning. And in doing so, they got the permission for the alcohol permit for the service station, gas station. And now they're gonna come back and try to put a liquor store at that station. And the state of Georgia say you cannot sell liquor at a service station. So to get around is to pretend that it was all part of the plan, but it wasn't. And therefore, I don't think y'all gonna be duped into that. So I'll wait until the petitioner come forward. Thank you. Any question for me?
All right, commissioners, you have questions of the opposition? Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Wimbley, I appreciate you coming down here and spending time talking to us and the rest of you too that came. Are you familiar with who your representatives are on the school board and on the county commission?
I am.
Can I make a suggestion that you be in fervent contact with those people and explain your opposition?
I have been.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the opposition that wants to come and speak before we close that section and allow the petitioner to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am, if you could come to the mic and give us your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Carrie Childs, and I live at 1121 Walton's Trail. We have beer sold on every corner. Every service station sells beer. I moved off of Tobacco Road because of the crime. Move out, and then what we get? Another service station that we didn't need. We're trying to raise our kids out there. So why put a liquor store right at our front door? It makes no sense. It makes no sense. And you, I mean, I got so upset when I heard this. Crime is rampant in Augusta. We have no grocery stores. We have no place for our kids to go and relax and enjoy themselves. But we're gonna make exceptions to put a liquor store in our front door. I don't think so. I don't think so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else before we close this portion? Okay, thank you all. If I got a petitioner to come up and give us your name and your address and talk a little bit about your petition, and you have the opportunity to respond to the comments that you've heard.
My name is Shravon Kumar Rao, 58 Birch River Point, Dallas, Georgia. I'm extremely sorry if you guys think, you know, we did it on purpose. This opportunity came to me about a few months ago, the landlord himself, while this was in construction. So the goal was never to put a liquor store over there. The sole purpose of that property was to build a station. That's it. The use of the space, that was, that came in later on. So liquor store was never an idea. That was, that came in later on, much later on.
Sir, if you could just direct your comments to the commission.
Sir, that was never the sole purpose of that store. I think gentleman said that earlier. But just wanna clarify that. The sole purpose was to build a station for the neighborhood. That's about it. The building next to it, it was an opportunity, and we wanted to try it out. But if the neighborhood thinks that's not a good idea, I mean, I'm with them. I understand. So we can use that space for some other ideas. Fast food, something. So extremely sorry for that if you guys think, you know, we did that on purpose. But yeah, that's about it right now. It looks like the neighborhood doesn't want that. Community doesn't want it up there. We will take our application back if that's, makes them happy.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions of the petitioner, Commissioner O'Neill?
Chair, I think we're actually hearing the case. I'm not sure if we need to take a vote on the suspension of it, I mean, or postponement of it.
Yeah, no, I think it's open for whatever motion you would like to put forward.
I make a motion to not postpone it and to hear it today.
All right, hold on, commission. We're gonna defer to legal.
I make a motion that we approve his withdrawal of his application.
Okay.
So just so, so just so we are clear and the petitioner is clear the implications of withdrawing his application to make sure he understands what that means.
Brian Kepner, zoning administrator, I just wanted to make sure the applicant understood that this is a recommending, this is a recommending body, and that there is the final decision by the Augusta Commission. So I wanted to make sure he understood if he was withdrawing the application, then it wouldn't go forward to them for a final decision. That's why I was involved.
Gotcha.
And is he clear?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. So I think there was a motion to withdraw, and it was seconded as well. All right, so if we can just do a roll call vote on the motion to withdraw.
This is a request to, or a motion to withdraw without prejudice, right?
Yes.
Okay. Prince?
Yes.
Okay. Malice?
Yes.
Larissy? McKnight?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Owens? Okay. And Spencer?
Yes.
All right, the motion has been approved for withdrawal without prejudice.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McKnight, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna make sure that when this does come before the commission, it's not gonna come before us now? Okay, that from that, that they know that there's gonna be no liquor store whatsoever and that they will work with the community to see what would be best in that spot.
All right. All right, moving to the next petition.
All right, our next item here is, item number three is a SE2505. This is a petition by SOAR Academy LLC on behalf of Hale Foundation, INC. requesting for a special exception per Section 26-1B of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to establish a private school affecting property containing approximately 20.65 acres and located at 342 Eagle Drive. This property is zone R1A, and staff will present.
Amanda Cruz, Planner 1. This special exception involves a 20.65 acre tract situated in the R1A zone, located along Interstate 520 at the edge of the Green Meadows Estate subdivision. Currently, the site features multiple buildings that were built in the early 1970s to mid 1990s. The request is for a special exception to establish a private school for diverse learners, including those with ADHD, autism, dyslexia, and other learning differences under the current zoning. The subject property is located in the South Augusta Character Area. This character area focuses on established activity centers with the focus for enhanced recreation and education activities, retail investment and job opportunities. Infill will be instrumental in the future development of South Augusta. Private schools are not allowed by right in the R1A1 family residential zone, but may be granted with the approval of a special exception. The property has previous zoning history. On Tuesday, July 10th, 2017, the Augusta Commission approved a special exception to establish a monastery on this property. The conditions were as follows. The use of the property shall be limited to a monastery with no community outreach programs conducted on-site. The property shall be inspected for a certificate of occupancy as to transfer of use and to ensure compliance with all necessary building and fire codes. Emergency access with all necessary building and fire codes, oh, emergency access shall be provided for public safety agencies. The commission considered two requests for special exceptions to establish an inpatient drug alcohol treatment center in March 2019 and 2020. Those were denied. Number three, per Section 26-1B of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, private schools are permitted by special exception in the R1A1 family residential zone if they generally conform to the following criteria. A tract upon which a private school is to be established shall have at least 100 feet of frontage on a collector or arterial street. A circular drive or similar layout that discourages backing and encourages through movement of traffic shall be provided for off-street loading and unloading. And the parking layout shall conform to Section 4 of this ordinance. A private school shall be screened from contiguous residentially zoned or developed properties by wall, solid fence, or vegetated buffer at least six feet in height. Sinage shall comply with the SCA requirements for institutional uses. A plan illustrating compliance with the above requirement shall be submitted to the staff of the Augusta Planning and Development Department before the proposal is placed on the agenda. The Planning Commission shall determine that all of the foregoing requirements have been satisfied and further that the benefits of the proposed school are greater than any possible depreciating effects and damages to the neighboring properties. As shown on the concept plan, 31 parking spaces are proposed. Adjacent zoning to the south and west are R1A. To the north and east are R1A and B2 general business. According to the preliminary traffic impact worksheet, traffic engineering has determined that a traffic study is not necessary for the proposed development. According to the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Maps Firm, the property is not located within a special flood hazard area. According to the Augusta Richmond County GIS map layer, there are no wetlands located on property. Pump-up water and sewer are present. Public transit is available near Augusta Technical College and along Lumpkin Road. According to the Georgia Department of Transportation State Functional Classification Map of 2017, Eagle Drive is classified as a local road. This special exception is consistent with the 2023 Comprehensive Plan. At the time of completion of report, staff has received a few inquiries regarding the petition as advertised. And we did receive comments from utilities. There are both a water and sewer line on Eagle Drive that is available for their use. And that concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? If you could come forward and give us your name and your address and any new details on your petition.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenesha Skaggs, and my current address is 119 Pleasant Home Road, Augusta, Georgia 30907. I am the founder of SOAR Academy Augusta. Our previous facility was damaged by Hurricane Helene. And so we have been temporarily located at Pine View Baptist Church. We are proposing this property because we are a, sorry, I'm struggling with this. We're a nature school. So we believe in students being outdoors, learning, and not on the devices as much. We service a huge population of students with autism, ADHD, and dyslexia, all high functioning, but just with the opportunity to be outdoors can thrive academically. And also, being strategically placed so close to Augusta Tech allows us to continue our dual enrollment program without the transportation barrier, ensuring that students have a clear purpose and direction after high school.
Thank you. Any commissioners have questions of the petitioner? Commissioner Spencer?
I think that's great what you're doing. I just was concerned about traffic, which was addressed earlier and kind of discussed in our pre-meeting. So my biggest question, was there any possibility that you all would consider coming in off the Augusta Tech driveway instead of...
Yes, I'll let Jordan Trotter answer that.
Hello, Ryan Martin, 706 Helen Court, Evans, Georgia. A access is proposed there. We need to get with the Board of Education about whether we can access their property. We have not started that property or that process yet. But yeah, it would be very desirable if we can work something out with the Board of Education. We would like to go through the Board of Education property and not the Augusta Tech because it's a county approval process instead of a state approval process. If we go to the Augusta Tech property, then we'll have to go to the state legislation to get that easement granted. So I'd like to reach out to the Board of Education, and that's intended to happen.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioner McKnight?
I have one. What about the securing the property for the students and for the neighbors? Is that something that y'all would be...
Our idea was to add fencing around the property. There has been some, I think, minor vandalism since it's been vacant. And so our idea is to completely fence off the property.
I think what y'all have done is great also. I don't want to put any restrictions that y'all can't overcome, but I would like to put a restriction that we do have fencing around the property. Is that something that y'all can live with?
Any idea what type of fencing that we'd need to have?
Tell me what's gonna be best for y'all and your students. I mean, I would say chain length, you know, six feet, but you know, chain length four feet or, you know, or just say fencing to a certain height.
Yeah, we can get that on the plan if that's what you require.
Okay, great.
Commissioner O'Neill? Typically, we've seen that your students are coming from Augusta and the CSRA as a whole. But you would say these are pretty much local children coming out of the public school system into a private school system?
Absolutely. And these are students that re-enter the public school system after two to three years of intense literacy, math, and social emotional intervention.
Okay. There was, when we have listened to this case come to us before with other organizations worry about, and I know Commissioner McKnight just mentioned the fencing, but being higher learning, it's not an issue we have to be concerned about children going into the neighborhood, you know, playing a hooky or posing any unnecessary or undue stress on the neighborhood. You have a pretty good read on your students?
Absolutely. Because we're a nature school, and we're focused on more project-based learning, which means hands-on learning for students from first through 12th grade. Our students are hyper-engaged in their learning. It's not a situation where we have students skipping school that's never happened at SOAR because of the high engagement with the project-based learning throughout the entire day. We do plan on having a full set of staff, sort of as a public school would, where all the doors are monitored and secured so that we know when students are accessing and leaving the property. But we really think that this proposed model will be something that continues with our students being highly engaged and not interested in leaving school.
A question. Regarding the after-hours program and how the students get to school, I see you made a notion that you will help provide transportation options. Are you bringing the students in? Or are parents... Are you bringing the students in or are parents bringing the students in? And what does after-hours look like?
Absolutely. Our parents drop off between 7:45 and 8:00 a.m., so it's a very tight window where there would be a pretty significant traffic flow. We do not have a proposed after-school program right now. Just the 7:45 to 3 o'clock hours are proposed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you for coming down. I support your program 100%. When you were in at the church, y'all had no problems whatsoever. Is that correct?
That is correct.
There was no problems with truancy. You had no problems with kids misbehaving in the neighborhood. It was my understanding that everybody in the neighborhood loved what y'all were doing and provided support for you. Is that correct?
That is correct. We actually have two students present, just to give you guys an idea of the type of population that we service. We aren't servicing students that we're talking about have extreme behavior challenges or mental health challenges. These are students that are left behind and with a few accommodations could really soar and do well academically and in post-secondary schooling. And so our population of students, again, they're highly engaged, and we've actually wrapped our arms around the church, and we plan on doing the same thing with the neighborhood. Our students have already started coming up with some solutions for the traffic concerns that the neighborhood have posed, and so we actually want to partner with the neighborhood, and we hope that our students will be a part of that. Their investment in our community is essential.
Well, the people at the church spoke very highly of you when I asked them, so I just wanted to commend you for what you're doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any additional questions? All right, is there anybody in the audience that is opposed to this petition? Seeing none, anybody in support of this petition? All right. Sir, did you want to speak? Sure, sure, absolutely. You can just give us your name and your address.
My name is Clarence Kendrick. I've been residing at 3022 Eagle Drive, me and my family, since 1981. Kind of slow with that memory, so y'all forgive me. First of all, I want to thank this board for presenting this information. More importantly, I want to thank our Commissioner DC Clark for arranging and hosting a get-to-know informative meeting that was held on Friday. Staff from SOAR Academy was there. Realtors who were representing the property owners were there. It was good. As the planning department read the history of rezoning efforts at 3042, it was occupied by the nuns when we moved in. It was great to see the entrance. It reminded me that most of us, we train our kids to ride tricycles and drive cars up there. It was open to the neighborhood. The nuns, it was just 3042 with a special exception, but our kids worship with them. That was great. But they overgrew the facility. Next came an opportunity by a group of monks. I can tell you, most of us thought the Lord had answered our prayers. Going to be six guys serving the community, pretty much like the nun. They didn't even have cars. They were going to be an open community, wanted to come by and worship with them. It just sailed right through this phase of rezoning. I didn't bother to come down because the planning department so adequately served by Mr. Boyd always give us detailed application. So I could just sit in my easy chair. It was to be approved by the full commission, but they had a catastrophic fire out in California, and their funding fell through. And that was a disappointment to everybody. And next came another series of rezoning effort that probably, if you had made that mistake, we wouldn't need fencing, razor wire. But thank God the wisdom of this body denied it. Along comes SOAR Academy. They want to be part of the community. They came in and they gave us a great overview, answered every question, told us about transportation issues that was being worked on, alternative considered. But I can tell you one thing. Eagle Drive is not utilized today like it was in 81. You said, well, how they getting in and out? Most of us ain't getting in and out on a daily basis no more. Ain't nobody going in and out of there. Some days, most of us don't even go outside, let alone leaving to go to work, and thank God for that. We have a very talented engineering department, roads and bridges. Whatever they see need to be done, I'm going to leave that to them. My purpose is to let this board know and the community know, and SOAR's Academy. We want you there. In other words, I've been flying some flags that have been kind of negative in their message to everybody. You all been in neighborhoods, you know what those signs are. Today, I'm ready to sow.
Thank you for those comments, sir. I think it's safe to say that we hope that this is the beginning of a beautiful collaboration. If there are no more comments, we'll hear staff recommendations.
Planning and Development Staff recommends approval of the special exception to establish a private school with the following conditions, and we do have a total of four to recently added. The very first one is that the school shall conform to the site plan submitted with the application. Any expansion from the site plan will be required to be brought back before Planning Commission for approval. Item number two is that a minimum six-foot fence be installed around the enclosure of the property along with gated entrances. Number three, approval of this rezoning does not constitute approval of a conceptual site plan submitted with this rezoning application. Sorry, rezoning application. The proposed development shall obtain a site plan approval in compliance with the site plan regulations of Augusta, Georgia prior to construction commencing on the property. And the very last condition is that the development of the property shall comply with all development standards and regulations set forth by the City of Augusta Richmond County as amended at the time of development, and that concludes staff recommendation.
To the petitioner, do you accept those staff recommendations?
Yes, we accept this request.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. With recommendations.
Moving properly, second to approve this petition with staff recommendations.
No, we want to move forward. I would like to hear, number one, and make sure I understand what the staff is trying to say.
Essentially, I've repeated, but it's basically they're presenting this concept plan that you see on the screen. Any changes to that concept plan has to come back before the Planning Commission. And so it says that the school shall conform to the site plan submitted with this application. Any expansion to the site plan will be required to be brought back before the Planning Commission for approval. So I think during the pre-meeting, there are some discussions about possible expansions and enlargement at the school. The current proposal is for 60 students, and you know, once the use is approved, there's really no threshold to bring it back. And this sort of gives it, gives an extra layer to allow for you to reconsider if they opt to expand from the concept presented.
I would like to, are both entrances going to be required? Or can they utilize the entrance today without expanding on those entrances?
So there's currently one entrance, and they're proposing a secondary entrance. And I believe they're going to work that secondary entrance out. So can you restate your question again?
Well, what I would like to see is that they are allowed to proceed with the one entrance and not require the second entrance unless they expand to a certain level.
Okay.
If that's possible, say.
So is, so does that, is the conditions that you read, does it prohibit that from happening?
Brian Kepner, the zoning administrator, no, that would not prevent them from proceeding now with just the one entrance.
Okay.
Well, as long as you clarified that, I didn't.
Okay, so now we have, we have a motion on the floor. So if we can do a roll call vote?
All right, so this is a petition, sorry, I'm getting used to this. A recommendation has been made to approve, subject to staff's conditions. Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Prince?
Yes.
All right, Malice?
Yes.
Commissioner Laracy? Commissioner McNight?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark? Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens? And Commissioner Spencer? Okay, and recommendation is to approve with conditions.
All right. Pass one.
All right. Very last item.
Yeah, we can pause briefly to let the folks exiting. Give them an opportunity to exit. All right, Kevin, I think we can go ahead and resume.
All right, our very last item for consideration.
If I could ask you guys to just exit as quickly as you possibly can so we can continue. All right, Kevin, go ahead and proceed.
Last item for consideration here is Z-250, I'm sorry, Z-2521. This is a petition by Danny Newman on behalf of 1443 Anthony Road LLC, requesting for rezoning from Zone R-1C, One Family Residential, to Zone P1 Professional Office for an existing office utilization affecting property containing approximately 0.24 acres and located at 1443 Anthony Road, and staff will present a background.
Amanda Cruz, Planner One. This petition seeks to rezone a 0.24 acre parcel at 1443 Anthony Road from R1C, One Family Residential, to P1 Professional Office for office use. The building is currently being used as a medical office and has been since it was converted from a residence in 1974. The building measures 2,392 square feet and was constructed in 1923. The subject property is located within the Old Augusta Character Area, and the vision for the Old Augusta Character Area is to maintain and enhance its old, or its historic character and unique mix of land uses while maintaining stability in the established neighborhoods. Underutilized partials should be redeveloped with respect for existing development patterns, and this rezoning is consistent with the 2023 comprehensive plan. The 0.24 acre tract is located on Anthony Road near the intersection of Wrightsboro Road. The property is situated in the Historic Somerville District. However, there are no immediate plans to improve the exterior of the site. According to business license records, a medical business has been operating from this location since 1974. The new owners intend to utilize the property for office use. The Georgia Department of Transportation G. functional classification map of 2017 classifies Anthony Road as a local road. Public transit routes run along Wrightsboro Road, and a bus stop is located approximately 450 feet from the property. Public water and sewer are present in the immediate area. The adjacent zoning to the west, east, and north are R1C. However, to the south is P1 Professional Office. According to the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Maps Firm, the property is not located in a special flood hazard area. According to the Augusta Richmond County GIS Wetland Layer, there are no wetlands located on the property. At the time of completion of this report, staff has received a few notifications of opposition regarding this application. We did receive comments from utilities stating that there are both a water line and sewer line on Anthony Road that is available for their use, and that concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? All right, sir, if you could come up and give us your name, your address, and any new details on your petition.
Sure, I'm Dr. Danny Newman. My address is 814 Conifer Road in Augusta, Georgia. I've been practicing medicine in this facility since 2003. This building was bought by Dr. Henry Bailey in 1974 from a private residence and was converted to a medical office and has been operating as a medical office in this vicinity for the last 51 years. We only recently realized that it had never been rezoned. When I bought the building from my partner, it was a handshake deal, and we didn't go through a process with a real estate agent. When we did, when we did update the office in 2003, we went through the Somerville Historical Commission. We were deemed a commercial building. We had to add a fire escape on the back, which you can see if you look at the pictures, that has been there since then, and we have been paying a business license for 51 years. The office currently does not, it has a parking lot in the front and back. It does not have a kitchen. It does not have any full baths. It would not be appropriate as a residence at this point. We are actually moving across the street. We want to stay in the neighborhood. We feel like our practice has been part of this neighborhood for many years, and we want to continue to do so. So we are literally moving from 1443 to 1450. The property is currently under contract to William Gore, who's a surveyor. The good news is he will only need three or four of the parking spaces. One of the reasons we're moving is that we don't have adequate parking currently. We don't have adequate handicap accessibility currently, and we oftentimes have lots of cars that are parking on the street. We will not have to across the street. We have 11 more spaces. We won't have to use the street at all to park. And Randy has assured me that he'll never have more than three or four cars in the parking lot at all times, which should allow the parking to basically be in the back of the building, so there'll be very little parking in the front. There'll be much less congestion. There's no, at this point, I understand that he is not planning on changing the outside facade of the building at all. It's a cool historical Tudor building. We do not want that to change. We understand how important it is to the neighborhood. I lived in the neighborhood for many years, and I understand that myself. He will only be open Monday through Friday, eight to five, probably at the most. He's got three employees. So I think overall, as a use for the street, it's going to be much less utilized than it currently is, and I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have questions of the petitioner? I ain't seeing none. Anybody in the audience that opposes this project? All right. Sir, would you like to express your opposition? If you give us your name, address, and you have a balance of 10 minutes, and if you could direct all your comments directly to this commission.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Adair Blackwood, and I live at 1439 Anthony Road in the Historic Somerville Neighborhood, two houses down. There's a house in between my house and this property in question. And I rise in strong opposition to the request to rezon this property. I speak not only for myself, but for many families who live in this, on this street and are concerned about the long-term impact of this zoning change. Please consider the following. This is not, this is a residential street, not a commercial corridor. Our neighborhood is overwhelmingly zoned residential. There's only one other property, which is the property that Dr. Newman is moving to, that's designated commercial. The rezoning request would break the character and continuity of our residential street and invite future commercial creep. Our homes are not buffer zones. They're our sanctuaries, our investments. They're where our families live, rest, and grow. Consider that this is, this property has operated commercially without proper Consider that this is a, this property has operated commercially without proper zoning for a very long time, as already mentioned. This, rewarding this rezoning or sends a troubling message. And it's basically if you violate zoning long enough, you will eventually be legitimized. The owners are only seeking this change now because they want to sell the building, not because it's in our best interest. Consider the negative impact on safety and quality of life. Parking has been a problem, no question about that. And there also been problems with these large trash bins that are kept in front of the building. And we've requested in the past that they be moved out of sight, but there were somewhat a dismissive response. The bins were moved, shifted, but they still remain on the street and remain eyesore. Noise, traffic, and activity paddings, patterns during business hours are inconsistent with a peaceful residential setting. Consider the property values. Rezoning to commercial could cause home values to decrease. Prospective home buyers are less inclined to invest in a residential block being transformed into a mixed-use street. Even the perception of encroaching commercial presence can drive away families seeking a quiet, stable neighborhood. There's been quite a lot of investment recently made on this street. There's been at least four houses that have been restored and we're looking to protect our investment. This, consider the long-term precedent and the neighborhood integrity. If this zoning change is approved, what stops others from requesting the same? This becomes a precedent, the first domino perhaps in a pattern that could change the street's character forever. And once it's, the character is lost, it's impossible to get it back. This might be one unique opportunity. We live, consider that we live here and they don't. This is not about an opposition to a business. It's about protecting a community where we live after the business closes and the lights are turned off. We're the ones walking the dogs, pushing the strollers, sitting on porches in, on the evenings and, and weekends. We care for our homes, our yards, for each other. We're the ones invested in this street for the long haul. So our ask is that you honor the spirit and intent of our one zoning that protects neighborhoods. Don't allow a commercial designation that benefits one seller and puts an entire residential community at risk. I really think that there, that someone would, can take this house back to a single-family residence. We've had houses on the street that were taken down to the studs. And their houses are in demand in this, in Somerville. There are less and less of them available. So I ask is that you turn down this request for rezoning.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any commissioners that have any comments or questions to this gentleman? Okay, seeing none, let me ask, is, is there anybody in the audience who supports this project? Who wants to express their support? All right, yes, sir.
Parker Dye, 1030 Katherine Trudy, Augusta, Georgia. Appreciate you hearing the proposed use here. I feel like a lot of the questions were answered, you know, from the opposition to it, which is understandable. We live in the neighborhood as well. My partner here as well lives on Anthony Road with a couple, a couple of babies. And he does plenty of walking in the neighborhood and, you know, is in support of it as well. So, you know, I, I feel like the parking component is the big key here. And for the past 50 years, this medical practices has been in business. And Dr. Newman said it himself, you know, there is a, a shortage of parking at this, this site. And over the years, they have parked on the street and it's probably, probably has been nuisance to neighbors at times. Fortunately, he found a spot close by that he is able to move to and kind of alleviate that problem for himself and for the neighbors. And with the new proposed purchaser, Mr. Gore, and his surveying company, I think there's going to be a relief in, in the parking issues that, you know, neighbors have seen over the years over there. So I, I want it to be known that this is, you know, this is a proposition that is going to help the, the existing use of the property. You know, 50 years ago, I don't know how you help something that has kind of flown under the radar, if you will. They've had a business license the entire time. And, you know, they're not trying to get by or get under, fly under anybody's radar with what they're doing. It's been a thriving practice for many years. So I don't want that to be, you know, a part of the thought process here. There's nothing underhanded about it. We feel like the, the use and the interest that we're getting is more on the commercial side. Unfortunately, it is a lighter use than the current. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Back to the petitioner, you've heard some of the opposition and you have an opportunity to respond.
Sure, thank you, I understand. And yeah, I would agree, this was an oversight on our part. We weren't trying to hide under anything. If that were the case, we wouldn't have gone before the Somerville Committee when we renovated the building 20 years ago. We wouldn't be getting a business license every year. We wouldn't be paying commercial taxes, that sort of thing. It's a little unfair. If you, if you look at where the building is, we're, we're actually one building off of Wrightsboro Road. So if you look at where we are, right there, if you go to the one behind, before that one, the picture prior to that, that shows the building. So to the left of the building, that is a, that is a P1. Behind the building and to the left is a P1. And across the street and one over is a P1. And if you were to go up Wrightsboro Road and go up the streets as we go up past them, John's Road, Stovall, some of those, lots of those streets have a building that's one or two off that is a P1. It's not a new thing. It's not like we're right in the middle of the neighborhood, right in the middle of the street. We're not, we're on the very end of the street and our next door neighbor is a, is a, is zoned professional. So we just want to keep doing, and we, we feel like this is lighter use, much lighter than it has been for the last 51 years. And we have not had any other neighbors. Our, our direct next door neighbor has not had any problem with this as far as we know. And we haven't, we don't see anybody else from the street or the neighborhood that's here in opposition for, for it. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to staff recommendations.
All right, so Planner and Development Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request to P1 professional office with the following conditions. We do have five. First is that the installation of a six-foot wooden privacy fence along the side yard in between the nearby residence and parking lot is required. Number two, any proposed lighting fixtures must be directed downward and not towards buildings. Three, any exterior improvements, new addition or construction must receive a certificate of appropriateness and or approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. Four, approval of this rezoning does not constitute approval of the concept site plan, which must be complying with all site plan regulations of Augusta, Georgia prior to construction commencing on the property. And number five, development of this property shall comply with all development standards and regulations set forth by the state of Augusta, Richmond County, Georgia at the time of development. And that concludes staff's recommendation.
All right, so do you accept the recommendations from staff?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to a fence. I just was wanting, going to ask for some clarification. I'm assuming that they're talking about where that hedge is right there? And that hedge is actually owned by my neighbor. In order for me to be able to put a fence up, I would have to cut her hedge back. If you go to the back of the property, there's an eight-foot privacy fence that she installed. That's about two-thirds of the way back through the building that goes through the back end of the parking lot. So there is a fence back there. I just don't want to do anything to upset her. We, we've been mutually sharing that hedge for 20 years. We cut it together. I had somebody cut it today. I pay for half of it, she pays for half of it. I don't want to do something that's going to upset her.
And staff has no objections with deleting that first condition?
Okay, before I move to you, sir, does the, does the commission have any hesitation with eliminating that condition? Okay, all right. Sir, did you, did you have something? Some, okay.
Commissioners, the lady that lives next door is actually a caretaker. Her son-in-law owns the property and he's currently stationed in Australia. Works for the federal government. And I have a letter from him, which I've submitted already, opposing the rezoning. Once the property is sold, Dr. Newman has no control over the property. Anything can happen. Whatever his, his reassurances are, there are no guarantees that anything will, that that can actually be carried out. And if you look at the house, I mean, it's, it's definitely doesn't fit with the character of the street with a, you know, paved parking lot in the front yard. And so it's, it's, it's really just, if you, I, I've submitted some pictures of the streetscape and other houses on the street. It just doesn't fit in. And it is inside, it's not, it's not contiguous with Wrightsboro Road. So it's off Wrightsboro Road. There may be other, I'm not sure if that's accurate information about other houses within the actual, off, off of Wrightsboro Road, have been zoned professional or not. But it, it's, it doesn't fit with our block.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It appears that your concern really is more of the parking. If not, if it's not going to be necessary, is it possible to do some kind of modification to front, put some plants and put some things to make it be a little more appearance?
Well, that would, that would be great if they take up the asphalt. That would be, that would make it look. Well, that's, that's, that's accurate. That it would, and that would, that would help tremendously. We were, we are worried about the traffic and, and the encroachment, you know, the gradual, with the, the, the street has really gone through a remarkable transformation over the past few years. And a lot of people coming in and spending a lot of money on the houses. And we'd like to protect our, our, our neighborhood and our houses. Traffic is an issue, just the streetscape is an issue, and encroachment is an issue. That's our main concerns.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Neill, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, this is operated for the last 50 years. And they've done things that the prior designations for them to have in the commercial license, operating as they have been. And this is a doctor's office. Yes, once we put these conditions down, that's, the, the person who's buying this is going to be subject to that. Right? So I'm not sure if that was a fair statement, but I understand what you're trying to say. But I don't, he's about to buy this with these conditions that we were putting onto the property now. So it looks like a great looking house. I, I don't know the age of this house, but it, it appears to have been there for quite a bit of time now. The seller, or Dr. Newman, he seemed to have already solved a bunch of the issues. There're not going to be parking on the street. It's being sold to a surveyor. He's saying that he's only going to have three, at most, three cars out there. So I've not seen a case where the seller has solved a bunch of our problems already. So I just wanted to share that.
Commissioner McKnight?
Did you say, Doctor, that you're in a Somerville? You had to get it approved? Any changes you made to Somerville?
Correct, when we renovated the building in 2003.
That would be the case now if you made any changes.
Any changes to the outside of the building would have to go through the Somerville Committee. And I'm concerned if somebody buys this building, they're going to knock it down. If they train, if they buy this to change it into a residential, into a residential home again, it's not fit to be a residential home. It has no kitchen, it has no full bathrooms, it has a parking lot. You're going to lose a 1923 house and you're going to replace it with a 2025 house.
I know some people in Somerville and I don't think they're going to let anybody take it down, to be honest.
Hopefully not.
Commissioner Owens, did you have some, then Commissioner Spencer?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to reapprove with staff recommendations concerning the fence.
I'll second.
I second, yeah.
All right, so it has been moved in properly seconded to approve this petition with the staff recommendations. Deleting the first one.
Correct. All right, so let's take a roll call vote for this one. Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Prince?
Deny.
Deny, okay. Malice? Commissioner Laracy? Commissioner McKnight?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
I have to abstain.
Okay. Okay. Owens?
Yes.
Okay, and Spencer? All right, so the request to approve with staff's conditions, elimination of condition number one, has been approved, heard the vote.
All right, thank you all. Tony Pitts, is there anything from legal?
Nothing.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from May?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right. All right, with that, we are adjourned.